All right, so, good morning, thank you all for being here, this is a very large group and so Joseph, you are very popular and you haven't even talked to us yet. We are really excited, I am personally excited about Joseph Montoya, he has just kind of recently come to the city and I am just so excited because his knowledge on housing and actually developing housing units is amazing and he's a great resource for our city and I was really happy that he took time out of his day to come talk to us today, so we're just gonna turn it over to Joseph to tell us about all the work he's doing on housing and then at the end we will take questions, but we'll let him get all the way through his presentation, so, thank you Joseph, take it away.
Thank you councillor so much for inviting me, I sure appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit about where we're at or where we want to go with housing and, and thank you all for participating in this, I'm, it's lovely to see folks interested in our democracy and the only way to I think have a real good democracy is for people to be informed and make informed decisions, so, thank you all for just taking the time and energy to participate in this. Uh, just, uh, we've got a few slides for you, so Justin's gonna put up the slides for us and, and I'm gonna try to be quick because as the councillor had mentioned, I tend to go on and on and on and so and so, uh, well, well, time clock me too, so I'm gonna go through sides fairly quickly to be, just to be able to be able to have a very healthy time for questions that you might have that we didn't cover. Um, now, the general purview that we're working under is Housing Forward, this, this started far before I came, so I'm, I'm just coming in and some of the more implementation systems of Housing Forward, but this is a measure by the administration to be able to increase the supply of affordable housing in the city of Albuquerque. I also did want to mention that we're working very closely with the county of, of Burnell County and really working on a lot of our strategies of both closely together and already have a few joint projects that we're working on, so, so this mentions the city of Albuquerque, but the reality is, is we're actually working very closely and in tandem with the, uh, Burnell County, uh, next slide. The main goal of course is having an equitable, um, sustainable city and that means many things to many people, but I'm glad there's a lot of folks here that are also interested in current of the sustainability side of it, whether it be energy conservation or walkability and things of that nature, that's incredibly important from a planning perspective and important from an affordability perspective. So the, the major goal is to have everybody have a place to be able to live uh, in the city of Albuquerque and Burnell County. Next slide. Um, we have enormous challenges in front of us, right, so, right now we're estimated that we're thirty thousand units short to become into market equilibrium, meaning that there is a, a relationship between the supply and demand in which actually the private market can sustain itself. Now, do, I want to be clear that when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about units generally that have to be subsidized in order for people to live and you'd be surprised at really what that means, so right now, over, uh, over half of renters in the city of Albuquerque are spending over thirty percent of their money for housing. That means that it's not going to food, it's might not be going to education, it's going to other things, it's going to housing, that could be very distasteful. Um, we have over two thousand three hundred people experiencing homelessness. Uh, there's a direct relationship between housing and affordability and the amount of, and the amount of homelessness that's we've seen to be increasing. A huge increase in rents, just huge increases in rents over twenty percent since nineteen twenty, uh, nineteen, uh, twenty twenty one. A statistic that we don't have here really hits home for many people is that over seventy percent of the population can't afford the median priced home, so, right now, so our, our children, our, our parents trying to move back into, uh, or grandparents trying to move back in city have very little chance of affording the median priced home, so we're not providing spaces for the majority of the citizens of either to buy or rent in the, uh, the city of Albuquerque. Next slide. Uh, this goes a little more to the just unmet need, what we're, what, again, what we're seeing is that there's a huge amount in, in need for additional affordable housing units to be created uh, within the, both Burnell County and the city of Albuquerque. Next slide. Um, this need goes along all the way to the middle class units, right? So one of the things, so in general, what we're saying is we're needed over thirty thousand units of housing, that's both rental and homeownership and that's also for, for, for folks of low to moderate income, all the way to moderate income folks. Um, but the city of Albuquerque's goal was just to be able to create five thousand new units out of that thirty thousand units, use, uh, directly using its, uh, resources, and this means financial resources or land use resources. Next slide. So, to date, now, what we, this, we're not starting from scratch here, there's been enormous amount of, uh, programs, uh, that have been developed uh, in order to increase the supply of, uh, units or to support five units. Um, in the last five years we've invested over thirty six million dollars of city monies, federal monies, state monies. We've created eleven new programs that we didn't have in the, uh, in previous years and we've served over forty two thousand people and we'll talk about the kind of programs that have been running. Next slide please. So, we have, what the city of Albuquerque does is we supply, uh, with not, uh, either, uh, with internally with, uh, programs that we run internally at the city or with our nonprofit partners and these programs include, uh, home buyer assistance, uh, both financial and assistance with being able to get credit worthy uh, tenant based rentals, since this, meaning that we assist, uh, in, uh, helping, uh, folks get a rental and keep their rental. Uh, we've already provided operating funds for federally funded projects, meaning in many of the projects we, that, uh, are created, you, used federal loan cover housing tax credits and we both supply funds for those organizations that assist in creating and maintaining those units. Um, we also have an eviction prevention program, so one of the best ways for people make sure that they don't become homeless in the first place and have that problem to deal with, making sure that they're staying in the units. We've also provided money for legal services, this means, uh, that is for instance, uh, to be able to assist both landlords and tenants uh, work out their differences and also making sure that everybody is being the current regulations relative to landlord debt loss. Uh, we've provided new deposit insurance, uh, we've created new housing vouchers that we didn't have before and we also have a, a, a new homeowner rehabilitation program. Next slide please. So, we've also created, uh, uh, so, so those are programs that assist uh, in, in actually both maintaining and keeping people in their units and being able to access to this, but the reality is, is if there's no units to go to, none of those programs worked very well. So, we have, uh, created over, uh, thirty one, uh, new projects, right? Over two thousand two hundred units have been created, about half of those have been affordable units. Uh, this, this combined units that have been created out of uh, this new department which is, uh, HHS, which stands for, uh, health, housing and homelessness. Uh, we've invested over seventy one million dollars and, which has created over four hundred ninety two million dollars um, and, uh, really does, I'm, I'm sorry, in project value, meaning what we've invested generally is relatively small, our investment in, in terms of being able to getting public and private sector resources and, and being able to actually create a lot more wealth. Next slide please. So, here are examples of units that we have created or assisted in creating in the past working with nonprofit partners, were for, with for profit partners. Um, and these are, uh, the ones that you're seeing here are affordable units, meaning that they're that they're affordable to people of eighty percent of median income and that's really folks that are working in the, you know, uh, as as, uh, teachers, police officers, firefighters, uh, city workers, municipal workers, uh, retail industries, things of that nature. Uh, a many of these units however, because they're using a, with, of a vehicle called loan cover house tax credits are, uh, available to folks of people at sixty percent income, so a little lower income levels. Next place, second place. Uh, we've also, so those were new units that are created and new developments are created, these are also examples of units that were up that we either assisted in acquiring or that we held in, or that we held, uh, and by we, and me, again, ourselves, nonprofit partners, Albuquerque Housing Authority, which is a separate, uh, separate organization, but we were closely with them. And, uh, and we actually, City of Albuquerque actually holds and built, uh, and manages units themselves also. So, examples here are developments in Sawmill, uh, Delmont area, uh, develops up with units that we've assisted, created in financing the Housing Authority that were already there that needed rehab and to maintain their affordability and in every instance actually increasing their energy efficiency once we rehab or, uh, developments. Next slide please. So, going back to the bigger picture of what this Housing Forward, uh, kind of concept is in terms trying to pull the different levers that we have in terms of our ability actually create more affordable housing, the city really has really only two kind of major levels to be able to pull. Uh, we can't do a lot about the interest rate environment, which is very high at this time. We can't do too much about, for instance, the, uh, the cost of materials which have gone up substantially the last development that I did, uh, I had to reperform it every other week, so the, the cost of materials were skyrocketing if you could get materials. Um, so there's a lot of barriers relative to the ability to actually build any housing at all, much less affordable housing. So one of the things that we've, uh, been able to look at that, uh, that Councillor Clem was heading and did a fantastic job of promoting, uh, is to, to be able to allow ADUs there, these are accessory dealer units throughout the city. And this provides an opportunity to be able to, uh, uh, allow folks, if they so choose, no one's forcing that, but if they so choose to be able to provide a, a grant effect, uh, mother-in-law, but units, but called ADUs, uh, uh, to be able to either, uh, assist and you could rent them out or you have the ability to take care of family members, whether they be the kids you can't get out of your household right now, or, or, uh, your in-laws that you want to be able to, to bring on in, so it's a good way because you don't have to have any more extra infrastructure. Um, it's a private sector, it's a private sector uh, aspect and it's up to individual homeowners to be able to allow that uh, in their own backyards. And so we're very happy to be able to do this and this is one of the things that many communities throughout the nation are actually, uh, uh, promoting as one way to be able to assist in terms of the, uh, housing crisis and this is an issue not necessarily affordable although many of them, units can be affordable, but this is definitely a unit to be able to increase the total amount of supply. Next slide, next, uh, please. One things that we're working on now actively is we're actually buying and converting units. It's a lot cheaper to be able to, uh, uh, buy, uh, buy and rehab motels and make them into apartments. Um, the cost differential is between, somewhere between a hundred thousand and a hundred twenty thousand a unit uh, to be able to purchase and rehab uh, for new construction of affordable housing or any housing actually in terms of apartment units, you're talking about three hundred and fifty to three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a unit. So, it's a lot less expensive and a cost effective way to be able to achieve that. We have, uh, already bought and are rehabbing a, a hotel complex. Um, uh, it's called Sure Stay, although we have renamed it now, it's, um, Albo Saltos Lots and, uh, looking forward to getting that online here very quickly. Next slide please. One of the things that, that's really happening is, is our workforce, right, we just don't have enough workforce to be able to actually literally build a number of units that we've, that we're hoping to be able to assist in building in the future. And so, the, the city of Albuquerque is actively, uh, engaged in workforce training to be able to assist in creating uh, more laborers, more skilled workforce, we're, we're, we're working with AFLCIO and other organizations to be able to track, train and incentivize more housing workers because uh, without the workers there, you're not gonna be able to get anywhere. Thank you very much. Uh, next slide please. The other issue kind of on the negative side is we've seen a lot of units that uh, housing units that have either been abandoned, uh, have not been, uh, have not been, uh, kept and, you know, they're providing a problem, especially if we have folks who uh, are invading the units themselves or using them for illegal purposes and that really tends to bring down a neighborhood, so it's really important for us to be able to maintain the physical aspects of, of these units and hopefully, and, and we're working on right now, uh, increased funding to be able to uh, provide funding to get these units back up and into housing because without the financial ability to be able to rehab these units they're still gonna remain a scar on the community and it's very difficult for us to uh, go through the processes necessary to have them completely eliminated and then you, then you just have empty lots. So it's really important for us, uh, the, we have an adapt program that's really being very aggressive about going after many of these units. Um, but on the other side, we've got to work a little farther more and find increases in funding to be able to get units, um, back online that have been abandoned, as it might be, we're working closely with the Mortgage Finance Authority, uh, in order to be able to achieve that. Next slide. So, um, when we say housing access for all, we're really meaning all kind of sectors of uh, and all income levels of our populations here and it's incredibly important that in order for us to be able to do this we need to be able to really identify the folks that are most need, be able to identify what the needs are and be able to assist in, uh, creating those programs uh, for those folks who need it most. So this just talks about the Housing Stability Fund that we've created and tenant protections in order to make sure that folks have a fair chance, especially, uh, as tenants. One of the things that we'll see when we're in a market like this where uh, rents have gone up substantially because there's not enough units available for folks is that, uh, that those folks who are a little more vulnerable, um, uh, are easily, you know, kicked out of their rentals and have no place to go and so we really need to make sure that, uh, uh, folks who are renting are well protected. Next access please. So, and this is what, again, one of our social services programs or several of our, uh, uh, programs to keep people in place, uh, whether it be, uh, immediate rental assistance, which we have available for folks in order to assist them in their rental, uh, whether it's, uh, helping folks get into the purchase of household items, um, uh, or helping them avoid for, uh, eviction. And we've invested quite a bit of money in this particular area in the last few years uh, using, in part using a lot of federal COVID related funds. Next slide. And that's it, I hope I got through that, uh, quick enough councillors to be able to answer any questions we might have and uh, hopefully that was a, a broad enough overview to give an idea of what we're doing and what we hope to be able to do, I just want to put in a plug that uh, we are in need of substantial more amount of fund, funding that we currently do have now. Uh, we did receive a lot of federal funds, but that's, that's gonna be ended, uh, uh, here, and that we have used all those federal funds and, uh, the council was also behind a large initiative that we had uh, last year to be able to find a lot more funding for affordable housing. Uh, we've used up just about all that funding and so we really need to concentrate on making sure we have large, sustainable amount of increased housing of, uh, funding available in order to realize our goals of creating five thousand units, so I just want to put that in plug in, uh, and, and I did want to again personally thank the what, the councillor for her abilities and her vision in terms of assisting us and really making sure that there's housing available for all.
Thank you Joseph, um, let's stop screen sharing so I can see folks. Um, and I do want to, uh, raise your hand if you have a question, we will do all the folks on screen that want to ask a question and then if there's time, we will go back to the chat, so your best bet is raising your hand, um, and while we get folks in queue, I wanted to ask Joseph if you could just quickly talk about the Housing Collaborative, um, that we're doing with the county and, um, and then I want to let people know about, um, a capital outlay request that I'll be asking all of their help with, but go ahead and give us a quick overview if you don't mind.
Sure, in fact, thank, thank you very much, yeah, as I mentioned at the very beginning that we're working very closely with the county and this is not just, you know, hey, we're talking to each other and singing blues together as it might be. Um, the, the council and the, and the, uh, Board of County Commissions have, uh, passed both a resolution in ordinance that, uh, provides an MOU so that we're working collaboratively together, uh, on both, um, policies that we may be able to assist in and actually joint funding of different programs. Uh, this will also assist us, I think, in terms of, of, um, asking the state for funds because we're asking as one unit, uh, uh, working collectively together and if you combine the populations of the city and the county, we represent just that alone over a quarter of the population, so if we don't solve the problem here in Albuquerque and in Burnell County we're not gonna be able to solve it for the rest of the state. So, uh, we have several, uh, initiatives, one of the initiatives we just spoke on is we uh, were able to work on a grant application together and that was just submitted just the other day in order for the county to be able to review some of its, uh, ordinances and then also assist in, uh, the production of some new housing in the North Valley area. We've also been working specifically on, uh, what we call it, it's a federally, a, a federal two oh two program. County has identified, uh, both land and, uh, and buildings that they had just recently purchased for the purpose of creating, uh, housing for elderly, it's elderly housing program. And then we've identified funds that we can assist in the financing of that, so hopefully, and that hopefully, we will be coming together to be able jointly put out uh, RFPs for, uh, two oh two developers and, and, uh, program folks to be able to assist in developing more, um, uh, folks for, uh, elder, uh, more folks for elderly populations.
Perfect, thanks Joseph, so just, just so everybody knows, because you'll be getting emails from me and Justin about this. Um, one of our, uh, capital outlay requests this year, um, it will be for this Housing Collaborative and so just expect to hear more from us on that and we always ask all of the residents of District Seven and any interlopers who might be on here to, uh, reach out to their senator and their representative and ask them to support whatever capital outlay requests we have and again, one of our priority ones this year will be for the Housing Collaborative that we have with the county. Okay, so we've got a little bit of a queue going, I'm gonna go to Margaret Bell first.
Yeah, my question has to do with land. Um, do we have enough land to build all the units that we need and do we have a, I expected a combination of vacant land and infill projects, but do we have an assessment of of what we have available in that area?
Uh, thank you Margaret, yeah, so, but we're not doing anything, we, we, we want to be able to spread the opportunities throughout the city first of all. Um, and, and you bring up the question, I think it's a very good question about infill. Really, when we're talking about sustainability, it's not about spreading out, but it's about building up. So the, the issue of land, um, we want to make our developments that we have far more, um, um, it have, making far more walkable and have the, and have the units themselves, um, concentrated where their services along our, our centers and corridors, and so there's actually quite a few opportunities for redevelopment of of, of land, not necessarily, there's not, uh, there is a, a lot of land that is actually vacant um, that, that is available, um, that can accommodate it, but not everything, a lot of it has to be redevelopment and really increasing the amount of units in a, in a particular area uh, in order to be, uh, a, a lot more sustainable city.
Thanks Joseph, and I'll just add in that for those that are in District Seven the Manal Metropolitan Redevelopment Area, which is on Manal between the interstate and the Version Channel is, you know, what I've been pushing Joseph on every single time we talk that is the perfect example of really smart infill there's, there's empty lots there, there's old buildings that are not useful we need to be looking at those kind of opportunities citywide, but for District Seven, that is the most glaring opportunity, so, uh, Daniel.
First, I want to, uh, thank the councilwoman and Mr. Montoya for all the good work you're doing, it's very impressive, it's very, very good, so much needed. My question is how, would you discuss the strategy or strategies that are being developed and employed right now to meet clients where they are in terms of these many programs and services, how are we getting them out there? What's working and what's not?
Mr. Margaret, that, yeah, thank you very much for that question, so, um, we have a, we, partnerships not only through, uh, uh, to kind of re- retail, um, is, we, I would just call it, retail outlets we have in order not only getting information out there all the time but making sure that there's a constant flow of information that's going out. So, uh, we have I'm gonna estimate seven nonprofit partners that are constantly both building and creating, uh, new units uh, that we work with, now all the units that we've assisted with to date also have very long waiting lists. So, not only do they have their own ways in terms of, uh, using emails, uh, using their webpages to get out the word that where units are available and the city of, of Albuquerque also has its own webpage to be able to do that. We also have different programs internally that are run by the city, so for instance, in our community centers we pass out information about all our different programs and some of our programs are actually run by the communities themselves, so as a, for instance, we have the, um, rental assistance program that where folks actually come in, um, we advertise that, uh, that, uh, rental assistance is available and those are actually managed by city employees in our community centers. So, the problem hasn't been, quite frankly, that there hasn't been enough, um, outreach because uh, that, there could always be out worship for information but the problem has been we just don't have enough resources for the people who are already coming to the table. As I had mentioned before, number of units isn't enough, we have waiting lists for number of units and for almost all our programs, it's probably already oversubscribed.
I'd also add to that Joseph, we have four health and social service centers around the city, so when these are the kind of, um, brick and mortar locations that folks go to to get help with those reviction prevention assistance that we have, they also have, uh, food boxes and clothing assistance in those locations as well as some tenants, um, healthcare tenants, especially, I know U and M has a couple of clinics there. Um, so we do have like a couple of kind of walk up and see what help is available kind of locations, uh, that are, are pretty embedded in, in their communities, we've got one over here on South Broadway. Um, John Marshall, we have one on East Central, uh, one in the near North Valley and one on the Southwest Mesa. So, those are really great spots and they, that, that team does a lot of outreach too as, um, at a number of, uh, kind of community fairs, they just put on P and M's big assistance fair was last weekend or two weeks ago. Uh, that's a really huge event that, that we put on in, in collaboration with, um, P and M so to really try to concentrate a bunch of resources in one place and the line was out the door, I think about two thousand people attended that. So, in terms of meeting people where they're at, we're, uh, doing, doing our best on that front.
Yeah, thank you Katie, I thank you very much for the information and in addition also, we're, we're having a fair this Saturday of working with the planning department on housing resources in the International District. So, w- we're out there.
Thank you for this good work.
Thanks Daniel, uh, I see Peggy, let's see if we can get her off mute this time. Peggy, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
How's that, can you?
There you go, yes.
Okay, I had, um, thank you again for all this. And I, I did believe it's a really important, uh, dialogue to have and to move forward, I think a couple of things, uh, would be real productive to have is like a, a public land bank for vacant and abandoned buildings. I think that's imperative so that we don't give the image that we are giving these opportunities to select people, contractors and, and people who have, have the, uh, inside check on available land. Also, I think, um, we need to speak to that, uh, ninety percent fail rate for what we're doing to keep the unhoused, uh, in their, um, voucher system or in their, uh, their places where they've been given these opportunities to live and what's going wrong with that and, um, in regard to the health and service locations I wonder if we could maybe establish warehouses so people can check their stuff in and check it out on regular basis so that they have at least a, a corner of the world to, to have their stuff in. And I also, um, think that the landlord insurance, um, that was on the table a couple of like last year, I think um, is a real important piece of the puzzle so that now it's going into this market can be assured that there's something that will help them when their choices get trashed. I don't, I also ask, I didn't quite hear the major levels that were, we, we're beginning to talk to two major levels within the city and then my, um, program cut out, but I can go back to the, uh, slides if you don't recall that particular, I love. And then what is the Mortgage Finance Authority?
Okay, that was a lot of questions and, and it was a little sketchy on our end, Peggy, we couldn't hear all of it, but I did catch Okay, that was a lot of questions and and it was a little sketchy on our end, Peggy. We couldn't hear all of it, but I did catch. A couple of them. So Joseph, did, did you catch enough to give a couple of answers and then we can go back?
I certainly did, or I believe I did. Say what we'll see can answer. So first of all, yes, we agree with you that land banking is very important. And that is an eligible use of of um funding that we have. And we actually have done land banking in the past. I E, I E, meaning that we've actually bought land that we can't use right now, but the intention is to be able to afford affordable housing. Uh a good example of that is a development part of the quarter that we just uh closed on on Fourth Street. So we, I, and I agree that we should do a lot more of that. That's an expensive proposition and it, but I believe that that's an. Uh so, so you have an agreement, I think, from Seth that that that's a a an exceptional thing to do. As it relates to folks who um uh we don't have a warehouse, but we actually do have a program by which we keep people's. Um uh we're talking specifically about homeless folks who need a place to be able to store their stuff. Um uh we do have actually a a program in place already. We're gonna have to expand it because really. The amount of space that we have available currently isn't large enough for the influx of folks that we believe that want to be able to store their stuff. But it is a program that is ongoing and has been used in the past. Um so we had land banking, we had insurance. Um oh, so uh uh also uh the landlord insurance deal, thank you very much for bringing that up. Yes, we actually have already developed that program. We have a a uh relationship with the Mortgage Finance Authority to actually administer the financial portion of that. And then uh we're uh we haven't signed a contract yet, but we have a contract uh with a local nonprofit, uh uh two local nonprofits. That will be able to do kind of do the outreach um for landlords. And what that, what Peggy is alluding to is, uh we have some folks who. Uh a lot of landlords feel a little hesitant about renting out to folks with uh some of our voucher programs. And feel that they're uh feel unsafe about it relative to the the building itself in terms of it being destroyed. And so we're creating an insurance program essentially so that if the a place is destroyed, we'll be able to assist in in. Um uh have ma- making the landlords whole. So thanks for bringing that up, and that is on a fact of sway. And the New Mexico Mortgage and and glad you brought up the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority is a quasi-governmental agency created by the state of New Mexico. Uh it's really essentially the Affordable Housing Bank for the state of New Mexico. They administer federal funds for the state. Um and uh and allocate uh uh low income housing tax credits. Uh they've got but. About twenty-four to twenty-five different housing assistance programs, but essentially they're a financial resource uh for developers to go to. To be able to get assistance with affordable housing.
Heard a question in there about, uh you put it in the chat as well. I don't know where you're getting that information. If you have a link, I'd love to see it. Um that's actually uh we, we know from our data for permanent supportive housing vouchers that there are actually ninety-five percent, ninety-five percent of people. That receive permanent supportive housing vouchers are likely to remain in housing after two years. So it's actually one of our most successful ways to keep people from returning to homelessness are those housing vouchers. So I'm not sure where you got that number. But that's, that's not our, what our data shows at all.
Okay, thank you, Katie and Joseph. Um all right, let's go to Michelle. And then we'll go to Karen. And then Peggy, if we didn't get all of yours, think through which one we didn't answer, we'll come back to you. So Michelle.
Um hi, um ve- various things. Um what's R A zoning compared to R one? They said that ADUs were allowed in both R one and R A zoning. I I find a little, a lot of little triplexes and things like that tucked away around town. And I don't know what kind of zoning they have, but people really like them. And they're, they're friendly and but there's pushback against them unfortunately. And so small units, small complexes.
Uh thank you, Michelle, for answering. So um uh the two type of zonings that you actually saw on the map. Or consider what your standard residential zoning, uh primarily single-family residential zoning. So you're exactly right. A lot of, if you, a lot of little triplexes and duplexes you see tucked away here and there are generally in the old areas. They were done actually before there was zoning, right? And we've, we've always done is we've put in regulatory processes. That have actually kind of excluded our ability to do those kind of units that are affordable, that are walkable, that are. Uh in uh neighborhoods where you could uh grocery shop and 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 get your things of nature. So what we're trying to do is actually go back to some of those issues to where to be able to allow folks to be able to. Uh eat and sleep in the same area as it might be in a, in a walkable neighborhood. And so this is one way of achieving that without, you know, doing urban renewals, it might be, and just kind of rebuilding. Uh rebuilding in a manner is what we had before, uh you know, a hundred years ago or even seventy-five years ago. Uh so thanks for bringing that up. I should appreciate.
And and also my husband wanted me to remind you that the ADUs have to have off-street parking too. That that was another um thing that made them um more acceptable. Um and a lot of times people already have garages or basements that they could easily convert. They don't have to build from scratch at great expense. Or they may already have one, but it hasn't been legal. So now they can um bring it up to code and.
Yes.
I have to jump in and say um garages and basements cannot be ADUs. Um it has to be a separate thing in the backyard. It has to follow the rules that were set forth by ADUs in the I D O. So um just, you know, lots more things to make it difficult to have that second unit, but that was, that was a. Part of the negotiation process.
I didn't know. So you can't rent out a converted garage?
You just can't have it as an accessory dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling units are separated um from the house, so.
Oh, okay. But I mean, it might be a separate um garage. And also, the, the Community Services Department got split up. Um recently, but there hasn't been a a big announcement of it. So the, where you work used to be part of Community Services, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. And I think there has been, there's been a lot of media around that split. And I, I don't know, I, you know, it's not the. Super cool news of the day, so it didn't get a lot of coverage. But there was a lot of press releases and a lot of information. So now it's the Health, Housing and Homelessness Department and then um split from the uh. Family and Community Services, right?
Youth and family is the other side.
Youth and family. Thank you. Um okay, let's go to Karen.
Hi, thank you. I think the walkability issue is huge, so thank you for talking about that. Um but my question is around um the fact that many of the things you've talked about are for resources for those who maybe could be housed. Had they just not had the resources. But one of the things I'm curious about is um services for those who are kind of what I consider more hardcore homeless. That have a lot of um behavioral health issues and and what we might be doing to address that. And and I don't know if you can speak to that or not, but I'm very curious about that.
Thanks, Karen. Yeah, I can speak to that somewhat tangentially. Um uh. We do have an enormous amount. We can actually provide a presentation on that you want, if you wish, in terms of kind of specific programs that are geared. Uh to the least fortunate of ourselves, you know, which is the homeless programs. Now, the intersection is um, I come from a. Uh developer perspective. And so my assistance in that is actually creating uh and working with a. Working with the human services uh folks to creating more permanent, a lot more permanent supportive housing. So in, and in fact, right now, we're working in an R F P to be able to put together a pre-development package for permanent supportive housing. Uh cuz you're exactly right. We can develop a lot of apartments. Um and uh if people aren't ready for those apartments, they don't have the necessary human services, support systems to be able to support them. They're not gonna be successful, uh even if they have the financial wherewithal to be able to uh be able to do apartments. So we, we have to come up with a lot more units that are, that have permanent uh queue uh. Services at that place specifically um in order for folks to be a lot more successful in their, in their journey. And a lot of folks, as we had mentioned, uh they might have some. Um mental health issues, or they might have some addiction issues and things of that nature that are, that take a lot more care to be able to take over. And they, and they need other services immediately in there in order for for them to happen. So yes, we're aware of that. And yes, we're working on it. That's actually part of the kind of the Gibson Health Hub in terms of our uh desire to be able to assist in that, that particular competition.
And Karen, we did, uh and we'd certainly be happy to invite them back um for another one of these in the future. But we did have the, the folks that were doing those kind of services um give one of these presentations. But it's been a while, so maybe we should up them um for one of the following months so that we can get more details on. On, you know, those, those human services. Uh Joseph and his team is really focused more on, you know, the development of housing. But I, I will, we'll, Justin will make a note of that and we'll add that to the list of topics so we can get really in-depth on that. All right, Peggy, did you have another question? Or did we miss one of yours? And if you're talking.
Thank you. Thank you, Tammy. I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I'm uh challenged here with my phone on the road. I I I appreciate um the comment about, you know, the land bank is really important. But the fact is, is way overdue. We have had uh several task forces for many years looking at. Homeless issues and the one recommendation that stands out above all is a public land bank for vacant and abandoned buildings. And uh I really wish we could see some progress on that. I'm not real sure where I got that statistic. It might have been for um temporary housing instead of permanent housing. So I'd like to see that and I'll follow up with. Y'all and I sincerely appreciate you being here. Thank you. And um the mortgage finance authority. Maybe if you could uh post those uh contacts in the chat, that'd be great.
Okay, did you have any other questions, Peggy?
No, uh uh I just um I really wanna know why we can't move forward on the land.
Okay, uh Joe?
What, what the problems are?
Go ahead, Joe.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure Peggy was finished. Thanks, Tammy. Um uh thanks, Joseph, so much for your presentation. I'd love to find out a little bit more if there's been any progress made on um standardization of uh. How should I say, plans for ADUs that I think the city was working in coalition with some other folks and some um other opportunities. In terms of like financing for ADUs that like are specifically geared towards affordable housing. I know the city was kind of working on both of those things, but like uh I haven't kept track of where it went from there. And I'd love an update.
Thanks, Joe. Yes, I can speak um to both of those issues. So yes, the planning department has been accepting um uh standardized. Uh s- standardized buildings in order to be able to assist in the development of ADUs. Um they haven't come up with very many yet, but they're actively looking and asking architects to be able to submit uh building plans essentially. That are already pre-done. So that is a concept. Yes, it has been working on. They just don't have that many yet. Uh there's work, they're working with an Injia out of California. For SIPs housing uh to be able to supply that. And um there is some mechanical issues in terms of, you know, the owning of the, the. The design itself and things of that nature, but the planning department is completely committed to be able to uh doing that. Now. Uh when it talks to, so you're right, one, what the only way to assure affordability, right, for ADUs is for there to be a. Um mortgage instrument or a financing instrument that then kind of mandates affordability of an A D U once it is financed. And so uh we brought this up in terms of this idea uh in terms of. Uh hopefully being able to be able to do that uh with new uh funds that maybe come, may be available to us. Or hopefully made available to us in this next fiscal year. So there's nothing to, to date now except for that. We've already kind of created models that would work. Uh we wouldn't do it internally. We'd contract out with a C D F I. Community Development Financial Institutions. Or there's also some interest um from um some credit units. Uh to be able to kind of manage that for us. But right now, there is no funds available uh to be able to do that.
Um a- and I guess that might be a question, a follow-up question for you, Tammy. Is there like any kind of like legislation in the upcoming budget? That's like earmarked for that or any, any conversations that are happening about that that you know of or places that we can go to advocate for the um. On these sorts of things to happen if it's not, so.
Yeah, um, you know, the next opportunity would be to put into the budget. Um there's not a lot of support for ADUs. Um so I, I fully support them. I fully want this. I will push for it, but I'm not gonna promise you that that's gonna happen. Um but stay tuned on the newsletter cuz when it comes time for that, I will let folks know that it's something I'm advocating for if they wanna. Um, you know, help me push on that. Cuz I do think that that is really um vital to making these things. Um, you know, not necessarily affordable housing, but uh lower cost housing.
And then I had a clarifying question on, on, like, I know that there's a lot of confusion about whether or not uh, you know, uh. Duplexes or other like attached dwellings. Is that, like, it didn't seem like that was going into the next I D O update as any kind of like request. Is that something that you guys are kind of pausing on for a little bit? So like, what ADUs as like standalone buildings kind of settle and figure out what happens there? And then come back in a year or two and come back to the duplexes or um how are people thinking about that? So.
Um so the I, the I D O update is starting right now. And one of my proposals in that I D O update. But, you know, I don't know if it will be there when it gets through the process, right? It's gotta go through the Planning Commission, um the Planning Department and then through the E P C. So um I don't know what that will look like, but one of the proposals that's in there is to allow duplexes. Um but with some, some restrictions cuz the concerns that we heard last year was that there will be a developer that goes in and buys an entire block of homes. Demolishes them and builds a bunch of duplexes. And so saying like, if there's an existing home there, you have to work within the existing home. Um to, you know, do what I think Michelle was asking about, like, check, you know, make one side into the duplex. Um but not changing the, you know, facade of the building, um not, not making a, you know, a new. Um not just raising a building and starting from scratch. And so that is the proposal. But again, the I D O process is long. And we have no idea what it'll look like when it gets back to us. All right, yeah, sure. Um okay, we have three minutes. I just wanna make sure, Justin, was there anything pressing in the chat? Okay, um great. If there are any other questions that come up from anyone, um you know, later, if you think of something. Feel free to email Justin and we will work on um getting responses back to you. And as always, email us if you have any questions about anything. Um next month, we are hearing from the traffic. Um the A P D about their traffic enforcement around speed racing. And this has been a huge thing in District Seven. Um they are doing so much work on this front, but it is a serious, serious problem. We've had two horrible crashes in District Seven in just the last couple of weeks. So please join us. It's always the first Friday of every month at ten A M. Uh Justin sends out multiple reminders. Um and it's also gonna be in the newsletter. And again, the recording of this presentation today. Will be in the newsletter that comes out in two weeks. So if anyone needs to see it, if you need to look up any of the slides or anything like that. It will be in the newsletter in two weeks. And with that, um I am going to let us go two minutes early. Thank you so much, Joseph and Katie, for being here and giving us all this information. We really appreciate all your work. Obviously, housing is one of the major focus, the focus of, of all the work that we're doing on council. So thank you very much. We'll see you next month, everybody.